I feel like that's the right control.
Okay, we're ready, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
We have a quorum of votes, so I'll go ahead and call this work session to order. Sounds like Vice Mayor, not he in attendance, and then also Councilmember Casa Grande, and Councilmember Ossenga is on his way, but we have a quorum at council level, and it looks like we have a quorum at PMZ.
Yep.
So with that...
What's going on?
I don't know.
We got some good feedback.
Some of your speeding up. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Administration. Now we called this meeting just to clarify some of the items with the ordinance, so I'll turn it over to Administration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It may have got a be.
I think that might be it.
Take what happens.
It'll pick up.
Why is it...
I did meet with Community Development regarding the ordinance, and in our discussion we thought that as far as process-wise, that perhaps PMZ should take it first as to why the ordinance came forward in the way that it did.
Okay.
I figured that it would be, you know, because it's a question between council and planning and zoning, maybe they can shed some light on your questions on why they reached the areas that they did and the changes that they have incorporated in the time that they why they've done it the way they've done it. So I figured that any questions that you as council have, you can ask the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as if they can't answer, we'll be able to answer myself or Chief Price.
So I guess I know I submitted questions ahead of time, and then council had some questions on the record, did you share those ahead of time with the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Not only to the Chair for your questions, Ms. Terry, and then as far as the questions previously from council. I did have a meeting on Monday afternoon with Councilmember DeMoss and Casa Grande last Monday, not this Monday, and we discussed some of the changes that they were really interested in, in making it a little easier to read, and one of them was instead of having the building permit or the building, sorry, the international building code and the international fire code all throughout the document, to put it under the definitions of building code or being, so it will be like you're looking at it and you if we referenced it, you go right back to looking at building code and having those areas referenced. And then we discussed the request for insurance. I believe that I answered all of the questions that Councilmember DeMoss had, as well as Councilmember Casa Grande regarding insurance. It is something that, you know, we haven't asked for in the past, but when we initially started the short-term rental compliance and during work sessions, we did include it in the application that you could give us your insurance if you had it, and we had one citizen at the time want to know why insurance would be so important, and then the Commission answered that question on why it's not only beneficial for you as a business owner doing a short-term rental to have insurance, but how it helps with the complacency and the basically the life safety of people just feel good about knowing that everybody's insured.
And then the main question I have, and I don't know that the Commission can answer this, but has the Attorney reviewed it within the context of, so we're going through that big code revision, has the Attorney reviewed this ordinance specific to that code revision? Because I'm concerned that there's parallel things happening that aren't intersecting.
Madam Mayor, we did send it to both Brooks and Sam Severin. Their response back was some minor edits, but they have been reviewing it that same the same way. Like when we gave it to them, we brought up the fact that we were doing a codification, and their response back was very minimal on just some wording, and we changed that before it was even brought to Planning and Zoning.
I have the same concern, and I brought it up during work sessions, when there's when you're taking an ordinance and codifying it, if you don't have numbers and letters, where do you put it?
Yeah.
Like you have in this ordinance asterisks and then a fire code or building code, and if I was to codify this, I would have a hard time. And I mentioned it in work sessions, and I suggested possibly using footnotes to just reference where in the building code and the fire code, and from what? My understanding was from the fire, the fire chief who attended our work session, I think Stefan was at one, was that there's a lot of misunderstanding between B and B or a short-term rental when the fire or building department come for the inspection. What they read in our code doesn't meet up with what the fire and building department are expecting to review or inspect. So that's why that fire and building codes are inserted, but I would be hard pressed to codify it the way it's required.
Yeah, so that's, you know, that's one thing I asked about at the meeting, is I want to see how it all jives together, because so we have a variance option in Title 15, so now if we're incorporating all this building requirements into Title 15, will they be allowed to use that variance that's already outlined in that title since it's under that title? Can they ask for a variance since it's now included in the Title 15?
When I spoke to Mr. Severin, it was a yes, they could apply for a variance, and then it would become in front of the Commission, and the Commission as a whole would be able to vote on whether or not that was a variance that would be, you know, noteworthy or has the reason that it doesn't meet the code as it does right now.
But would that be setting them up? Because can, so to the fire chief, if someone doesn't want to match building codes, but then comes to planning and zoning for a variance, and the Commission gives them a variance, is that under their authority?
Madam Mayor, for variance it is, then it's going to get tricky when it comes to us, because we're going to have to review it under whatever we are going to call it, so that's...
So it's like safety?
Well, variance could be for building a building, right?
Yeah.
It would be, so if it's construction, then we're going to plan review it under the type of, like you see, R1, R2, R3, or industrial, I don't know, that's how we're going to do a plan review. So they may think that they got a variance to allow this, what you used to call it, and then it gets to us, and we're like, we don't know what that is, we don't know what that means, that doesn't make, like, we don't have that classification. So that's kind of why we were trying to blend them together, so that when we talk R3, single-family dwelling, we're all on the same page, everybody's saying the same thing, not duplex, duplex, sixplex, you know, they they all kind of mean different things to different people.
R3, I'm sorry, Chief, but R3, do you mean single-family dwelling?
For, yes.
To us, R3 means multifamily.
Right.
And that's the confusion.
That's it. So and then that's how I don't think we're going to resolve it, planning and zoning to council. I don't, I think it's past the level of, we need to get some of this code stuff.
Madam Mayor, to your point of the two different definitions, in my discussions with Jeffy, I actually recommended that any reference to the building code be struck, because I can't, as Clinton said, I can't imagine even trying to deal with a variance on building codes, because I don't even think it's allowable. So to, and then we talked about that they would have an internal document that actually, like you just said, R3 means this, for them, that matches, it's not the same definition, but they recognize R3 as something else, so they would have an internal document, just to help with this.
Yeah, so what you're talking about is like when you, when you, well, I just have it printed off in my packet, but under 65, like it has that row of asterisks, and then it has like render all Bs.
Understand?
So on page 27 of the packet...
In some places, it, in some places, the asterisk is okay, because then it goes to the next number, but in some places, it, when it went to the building code and the fire code, there was like, right after housing unit, item 44, housing unit, there was asterisks after E, and then it jumped to institutional group 1, 1, 1, 2, 1, 3, but no, and I know I mentioned this at work sessions, how is that going to work? And I thought that there was going to be footnotes, but if we're going to take that out, that that solves my conundrum on that.
And Madam Mayor and Councilor Chair Edmond, with talking with Jeanette, the city manager, we discussed the, you know, moving forward, in the past, we've always, when entering in changes in the code, the parts that you don't change, we put asterisks in, and we agree that it is difficult when you're trying to present a whole new code or changes, and it jumps around because we don't make changes to 50 of them. And both Jeanette and I are in a grand that we combine the whole code, how it looks, in the portions that we are changing, so you see how it lays out from here on forward. And we've even talked about this, this ordinance in general, showing instead of as the where as's and everything, we show you an actual document that shows what it would look like when you pull it up, when you review it.
And that, that would be helpful, because then between housing E and 49 lodging, that section that's institutional group 1, 1, institutional group 1, 2, and institutional group 1, 3, is going to have a number. Right now, you wouldn't know where that's, I mean, it's going to end up somewhere between 44 and 49 evidently, but how would you, how would they know where to put that when they're codifying it? Because it's just, I know that the asterisk means nothing was changed in between that point and that point, but nothing tells anybody where that's going to fit under a number or a letter.
So it looks like you guys have already started working on cleaning up what the final code's going to look like.
Yeah, I do have a working document that I've been working for that brought back in all the numbering, and in my working, I struck all the institutional groups, but it does then move all the numbering into what it would be when it's codified.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So I know some people, getting back to the insurance requirement and the fees, had concerns about inconsistency in what businesses have to pay for, like, safety inspections, and I know I've talked to Jeanette Stephen about this, and what businesses are required to show proof of insurance. Like, I guess I would have to now show proof of insurance for my hotel that I run, but I don't have to show proof of insurance for my bar that I run. So I think that those are concerns to make things fair. Are we looking at striking those from this ordinance, or will that be something that just comes to the table for a vote?
It is.
Because I would amend it or try to, probably.
I would say that would be something that would come to you for a vote and amendment or however you would like to amend it. I did start working on it, but I don't have that immediately, but for the numbering, inconsistent numbering on that one as well to fix that, but that would come to you.
So just if this is being changed that much, it's got to come back to PMZ. I mean, we didn't, okay, thank, all right, one more round, ladies.
Does, excuse me, does that mean that you're going to take out that they have to have insurance? I mean, I think every business has to have insurance.
Yeah, but does every business have to provide a copy to the city of Suez?
Well, no, but I got to say, how do you know they have it then?
How do I know that you have, how do I know that whoever pick a business, the thousand has insurance? Like, there are healthcare facility, there could be major accidents there.
I know, I just, well, I don't care if you show it, I just have to have insurance, they're going to be in trouble.
That's kind of the risk that a person takes, yeah, they don't have insurance.
I mean, or it could be something that we require for all business licenses, but it should just be...
You don't have to show them.
They're all enough.
Just showing proof, I would assume most...
So this is for city, you mean, involvement in this, as far as the city knows, not necessarily if the customer knows, right? But when I'm getting out a patron or whatever business, you're not sitting there saying that here's, here's a thing on the wall that says, here's my insurance that I have or whatever, you're talking about in compliance with city.
It's adding additional code that, so to me, when you add additional code for things to check, you're adding additional work and potentially additional personnel at the city, because who's going to be checking for insurances? Is it going to be building department or community development?
Community development reviews all short-term lodging permits as they come in. Community development has been doing that since, well, they've been doing it forever, but when we started initiating the new application so we could really get behind how complacency would work, since 2000, late 2017 to current date, community development has done the short-term lodging permits. When they come in, we review them, we send them to the finance department, the clerks department, and the fire department. We have a checklist. I would say right now, out of the applications that we've received, over half of them have already given us their insurance, and they've done it because in 2019, when we initiated the change, we said that it was not required, but recommended that they have insurance, and everybody's been giving us the copies. We just mark it off, say that's part of the complacency, and if they don't give it to us, because it's not required right now, we just forward the application. The application has not changed significantly to where the staff that we currently have is overwhelmed with short-term lodging. It's the complacency portion that you, you know, you either want us to have everybody be compliant and safe, or you want us to, you know, sort of go, okay, well, put it on the fire department.
No, no, see, here's what I'm saying, because currently you don't have to track people down for their insurance, wait till that's a time suck, wait till it's required, and you have to do that. And also, I'd be interested to hear from the Attorney. It's easy to say if we want everyone to be safe, you can say that about every business, like a bar, like, I want everyone to be safe in a bar, do we want the city to start doing that? But my question to the Attorney then is, is what if we miss or misinterpret a certificate of insurance that gets given to us, then are we taking on partial liability, because we've now said we are going to verify that all these, if they have a permit through us, we are verifying that their insurance is covering at our levels.
And that's not just once a year, sometimes people get their insurance dropped, and we have to be notified about that as an additional...
We have to be named as additional insured.
Or they might drop their insurance.
Right.
Which I'm all for people being safe and covered, but it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of extra liability on where the city's going to be taking on.
And I can just say that, you know, in my research and what we've been doing over the last four years, the insurance for us, it's like, we just want to make sure you're safe, that you, you know that you should have insurance, like, and that's why we put it not required, but as time progressed, we realized, and, you know, thankfully, right now, we have a great full staff that's now doing inspections. I can honestly say that when I started in 2017 over there, we realized that a lot of people that were running B and Bs were not being inspected, and then we found out that they had done changes, and that's where it came back on the city potentially, is when we gone out, we didn't inspect because we didn't have the staff to inspect, let's just say that, we didn't have the staff, or you missed it, and you changed something, and somebody, God forbid, gets hurt or dies, they have the ability that, and you can, I can tell you that there's multiple cases throughout the United States that have gone back and forth, where somebody died, and the person's family sued the B and B, and their insurance turned right around and went, well, the city didn't inspect it. And then they went, well, we're not going to go after your insurance, we're going to go after the city's, because you didn't do what you were supposed to, and then now a death is being paid for.
But I feel like that's something separate from what we're talking about, right?
Well, kind of, because if the city issues a business license, is that not saying they met all of our conditions, they are, we're giving our lesson?
Right, and we don't, we don't look for everyone's insurance with the business licenses, so now that's with this point.
No, but I'm just saying, it's a, it's a part of, if you're worried about liability, just issuing a business license to somebody who might not be compliant or being safe, you're taking on that liability anyways, as soon as you grant the business license.
And if you want to discuss insurance, I mean, everybody's well aware, our harbor requires an insurance for your boat to be in the harbor, you're paying for your boat to be in a harbor.
Yeah, but you know why that is, though, that's because they could damage our facilities. So the difference is not that someone will get hurt or injured on their vessel, but because they could damage our facilities, that's why we make sure they're insured and names us additional insured. I mean, that's the difference.
Just like renting any space or leasing a, whatever.
Yeah, like if someone has a lease with us, that's why. You know, I guess, so the one thing I did ask was to talk to an insurance provider to give an example of a certificate of insurance, like what they would issue and how easy that would be, was that able to?
Madam Mayor, I'm not showing mine.
For your Ben breakfast?
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't know how to read them, exact copy of them. It's just a rider to do home rental endorsement added, so for a year, I pay $133.86 to State Farm for 12 months. What I want is, you know, the backup. Personal liability, 300,000, dwelling, 500,000.
Right, so do we check on the, do we check on the limits? Are we outlining limits, what they have to provide? No.
That's what they have.
It depends on how, what the value of the home, what the value will be.
No, because usually with personal injury, don't you say a million dollars a personal injury, if it's injury? So does it show on there that you provided a million dollars of personal injury? Where was that? I thought it was a million.
Looks like it runs 300, but...
It is on page 31 of the original packet, I don't know, it is under...
So, yeah, so, so, but no amount of less than 1 million dollars in aggregate?
Oh, didn't it, yeah.
So do you have a million in aggregate? Does it say a million in aggregate on that?
No, I thought you said aggregate as far as total.
Yeah.
Total, right. Yeah, so it doesn't say the word a million, it's just got 497...
497, 199, 372, and 149.
So it's well over 1 million.
Madam Mayor, I can outline what we currently require for business license for vehicle for hire, because that is a life safety issue, taxi drivers taking someone's life into their hands, they are required to comply with state law for insurance, and that is currently, my understanding is 1 million per occurrence, 2 million aggregate for our mobile and roving...
Do they submit a copy of that?
They do, it's required for them to turn that in, and to have the city as an additional insured, so that we're aware if something gets canceled. For our mobile and roving vendor program, we also require that general liability insurance, same terms for that, and if the term expires in the middle of, say, the season, the summer season, they're required to have an update, you know, furnished to us. So that's what we, my understanding was that the concern originally for insurance was directly related to home-based businesses, as it tied to life safety inspections for like B and Bs and nightly lodging, for having people in your home. Commercial insurance for a commercial endeavor is, pretty much takes care of itself, they have to have their own commercial insurance, so...
Do we require insurance for home daycares that you inspect? Do you inspect home daycares?
We do, but that's a state application, so I would never get involved in insurance.
Right, they're, they're watched by, you know, they're covered by the state, same with food handlers, they're covered under the state statutes.
No, I don't think, home daycares? Like, maybe daycare centers, but childcare in the home?
If you have over six.
Yeah.
If you have over six kids, then...
So less than six?
No, no, that's...
Yeah. Yeah, like, no one, no one inspects them. So what concerns did P and Z have? Because there were lots of questions and discussion during your meetings. Formatting?
Yeah, mine was the formatting, but then the other was just the confusion that an applicant has between where they fit if they are a, um, an apartment or a, an attached dwelling. And lodging and dwelling and housing, we had all three of those in the row. And so we, and it's hard to see because of the way it's chopped up. But it should be simpler once it is codified. So if we could take what's in the packet now and take out all the deletions and put all the additions in and just to be able to read it, like Jeanette said, I think it would be easier to understand. It, it, it actually is, it simplifies it. You'll see, there's a lot of strike throughs in this, um, draft.
And when we started our work sessions, we originally started with the entire code portion. And then as we progressed with work sessions, then our packets got a little smaller because, but we never went back to showing what it would look like as a whole. And I agree with Jeanette, we both, I think we both agree that that's how it should be at the very end, when you're looking at a packet. You should have your ordinance, but then have what it's going to really look like.
So how does it work if some, a question I have from someone that's building a multi-generational home that's not for bed and breakfast, it's for their own family. If they come in with a building permit and they have all these living units, but it's a multi-generational home, how will you have it go with this code?
It would be either fourplex, duplex.
Oh, no, not separate walls, like there's no, there's no, um, fire separation walls. Like if it's a multifamily unit with all interior walls, do they have to follow this bed and breakfast code?
So you're just talking about a normal seven-bedroom home?
Yeah, with separate units.
Separate.
Kitchen, bathroom, kitchen, still like the bathroom, kitchen units.
So then that is, uh, that would be essentially either an apartment. If it's more than six, then, um, it's got to be sprinkled, and it's got to be multi, it's multi-family dwelling. Um, and they would have fire separation between. Not really. And it's still bar three, or, you know, how big a home you want to get, but it's still, same, quote-unquote, single family. And then, then actually a multi-family, multi-family dwelling.
And a, a multi-generational home, if it were brought into us, right now, let's just say, somebody came in and said, I want to build, you know, a space for my kids, a space for my mom, space for, and then I want to live in there too. We would look at it as, just like Clinton said, is it four separate units? We would look at it as a fourplex. Is a fourplex allowed? Yes, a fourplex is allowed. Here's what you would have to do for a fourplex. You know, duplex, single family with an accessory apartment, like it, it all bases off of what is handed to us at the time. You know, if they were to come back and say, well, we want to, we want to build this, and then now we want to do short-term lodging in one of the units, we would then make them and have them, or require them, sorry, to fill out a short-term application, make sure that it meets the requirements in the zoning code, and then it would be inspected as that. It would never be like a home on a nightly based off of the, the floor plan. It would be based off of the unit and the space that was being used.
But then what gets tricky is there's no longer accessory apartments.
Correct, it's accessory structures.
No, but I'm, right, so if it's an accessory apartment within, like, so if that, if what you're describing, then what would that accessory department be defined as? That's what I couldn't find in this code.
So the efficiency apartment, also called an accessory apartment, under number eight.
So the problem I have with that and the question I have, so an efficiency apartment to me is like an open floor plan with a bathroom. What if it's an accessory apartment with two bedrooms and a bathroom? So I'm really thinking about this multi-generational home I'm being asked about.
So, um, the efficiency apartment, which is also known as an accessory apartment, was changed during development requirements. So those fall under a floor plan of at least by, under five hundred square feet. That was changed in two thousand nineteen under development requirements.
Right, so, but now I'm asking again, what you said earlier about an accessory apartment, how would that be examined in this code? Where would the definition be for that?
For an accessory apartment, or what you're talking about, multi-generational.
Yeah, so what you said was like a duplex with an accessory department, apartment. Where would you find accessory department in this code, other than that efficiency apartment?
You wouldn't, because it's not, it's not listed in the code any, it hasn't been since two thousand nineteen as an, an accessory apartment. So then you would go to your accessory structures, which we don't have any ADUs. They're not, right now, at this time, an accessory dwelling unit, which is what you're talking about, adding to a duplex?
No, no, so like, you're getting rid of apartment. In the planning and zoning code, got rid of apartment. So now, when you go to apartment, the new apartment, okay, keep losing my page. When you go to the new apartment, the only choices under apartment are?
Apartment, a portion of the building which is designed for rented, leased, or let higher. A commercial building, an apartment located within the building design. An efficiency apartment, also called an accessory apartment. A single, separate dwelling unit consisting of not more than one habitable room, which includes a kitchen.
Yeah, no, it's on page two, I just found it. But my question is, is what if you have a two-bedroom apartment? Just as a family.
In your home?
In your home.
Like in the basement, like just like a door to the basement, not firewall?
Owner-manager apartment, it's not a studio apartment, because there's two bedrooms. It's not an efficiency, it's not a commercial building. I think we need another definition in there. Because you're, you're excluding an apartment with, that's besides an efficiency or a studio if the owner or the manager isn't living there.
Well, now we have a duplex? If you look under, if you look under accessory structure, and go past E, it says an accessory structure shall be considered to be part of the main building when joined by a common wall or connected by a breezeway to the main building.
So a two-bedroom apartment is no longer an accessory apartment, it would then be accessory structure? Okay.
It's located on the same line. Now, initially, it says a detached structure, but then, then it gets a B, B, C, and then it says, an accessory structure shall be considered to be part of the main building when joined by a common wall.
What's the code?
Well, so, I guess my question, so what defines, you're saying accessory structure? Or is that not, I mean, efficiency, except, is that not defined as a one-room space other than a bathroom with so many square feet? I mean.
Uh, that's either a studio or an efficiency. Studio apartment is a small apartment with less than three hundred square feet with a fully functional kitchen and bathroom? Or, sorry, did I, what did I say? It must have started at three. I'm sorry. Believe it, one, it was one ninety, so.
What's, so going back, Cindy, what's the citation? There's no citation.
It's, it's, it's right after, um, the, the, now therefore be resolved, it's, um, it, and then it says definition, general interpretation.
And then it says B.
Then it's B, and then it's one, specific definition, one, accessory structure.
It would have been. It would have literally been on page two of the ordinance.
Yeah.
But it has to be detached.
It is rather confusing, because in, in the beginning, it says it's a detached structure, and then after, but then it said it shall be considered part of the main building when it's attached.
We need to get that in there, because I think there's a loophole. I think it's missing.
But isn't that what I'm, what I'm getting at here? It says efficiency, also called accessory apartment, a single, separate dwelling, not more than one habitable room.
Right, that's, so you can't build a two-bedroom apartment?
Well, then it's an apartment.
Then, then you're adding on to your house and adding it and making it a three, or a two, a duplex. If you're, if you have a house and you're going to add a two-bedroom apartment, then it's no longer an efficiency apartment, it's no longer a studio apartment. You are now looking at a duplex.
That's not what I would call it. I would call it, if it was a two-bedroom apartment in the basement of a single-family home, I would, and I was doing like nightlies in the summer in it, I would call it a mother-in-law apartment.
We don't have mother-in-law quarters. And, and that's where.
And that's where we, that's the importance of doing this, because that doesn't exist internationally. That doesn't, that efficiency accessory structure doesn't exist in our world. Um, essentially, you're talking about, it is a duplex. And if you came to me and wanted to build a house, and you said, I'm going to put my, my mother in the basement, she's going to have a kitchen, a vet, one, two, four bedrooms, I don't care. Um, but she's got a kitchen and a bathroom and a bedroom. That's a duplex, and you're going to have to have rated firewalls.
Unless it's a efficiency. Unless it's one, one-bedroom, then it's just an efficiency.
Right.
So two-bedroom makes it a duplex, one-bedroom makes it an efficiency?
Adds to the, yes, see, you, you have.
You don't recognize efficiency. No, he, in his world, it's a duplex.
Okay.
Okay, if, if that's what you guys are consciously doing, but just then, you know, mom and dad can't have two bedrooms in their.
They can, but it's a duplex, and they'd have to have a firewall. Which would be safer, which is part of why we do it, to safety, health and safety.
So who is it safer for then? The parents or the people that live upstairs?
Both, with the firewall. With the firewall, it's safer for, if you have a fire on one side, it's, what is it?
Well, it would be the same if you had a one-bedroom. If they had a fire with a refrigerator and a stove, a little kitchen, if they had a fire, it would hit you the other way too.
It's a duplex, too.
See, in, with his, in his world, didn't need a firewall because it's a duplex.
If with a one-bedroom, you say it's not, though.
No, in his world, there is no one.
His world, there's no one-bedroom. In his world, when he inspects something, that some, you know, let, let's just use the multifamily, or it's not multifamily, it's the micro-apartments. That's what started the accessory or efficiency apartment, the changes in the development requirements. When we went forward to the plant, to the fire chief, it was not even, at that time, reviewed as an apartment. It was reviewed as a hotel, until then they met the development requirement changes. But when he went to inspect it, it was inspected as a hotel until he met the requirements for the development part. But when he started, so he has firewalls between them. They're less than five hundred square feet, each one of them. And so it wouldn't have mattered if we, if he came forward and said, I'm going to build four of these, or I'm going to build one and add another. He's going to look at it as a single family, a duplex, multifamily, depending on how many of those spaces you're building and adding on to it.
And to answer your question, the firewall, what the purpose is, obviously, you say firewall, it's to stop the slowest spread of fire, right? The purpose is, it may be your mother in the basement. It, it may be someone you rent to nightly, like Councilmember DeMoss said. That, I may not know who's down there, right? I'm upstairs asleep in the house, and they have free rein to come and go, right? So I don't know if they're there, I don't know what they're doing. They could be making meth down there, I don't know what they're doing. They have a fire. We want to slow the fire down so people upstairs can get out, obviously, and they get smoke detectors. The other kind of small detail is, and this kind of goes along with the B and B and the whole home and nightly rental, someone needs to be responsible for that property, right? The property owner. So if this is your house, I'm the fire chief, I'm going to come up to you and say, is everyone out of the house? So we want to give those people time to get out as well. So if you're upstairs, start on fire, and you have nightly rentals downstairs, we'd like to give them the time to get out as well, because you may not know if they're there.
But my question then after that, is then why don't we require it on everybody? If you require it on that, why don't we do it on all of them?
It is on all, anything above a single-family dwelling.
I thought you just said it wasn't, you didn't have to have firewall in our code.
When they're building, if they're building a brand-new building, and they're going to require firewall.
Okay, but what's already built, and you just start having somebody sleep in the other room?
And, and then that's why the layup safety is so important. Because when he goes and does the inspections, he's going, okay, this is an older house you have, you're renting a room out, does egress correct? And like, tell me if I'm wrong, like.
It's, it's very difficult for us to inspect your, your, your home that you live in, if you want to do nightlies out of it. That's not in my code.
Yeah, but if I was doing nightly, I would get in trouble with Jackie because I didn't.
What I'm saying is, our, our fire and life safety codes, they don't address, right now, they are in the process of changing, twenty twenty-four is addressing it. Um, right now, that doesn't exist in my world. That doesn't exist, that I own a home and I rent a room. What life-saving components are required? Because there's single-family dwelling, are you commercial? Because you're charging, right? Some people make a lot of money. So do you go into IBC, which would be very strict? So we're just trying to do a mesh in the middle and just try to find what's safe for everybody. Can they get out of the window if there's a fire? Do they have a smoke detector? Do they have a fire extinguisher? Do the doors work, you know, easily get in and out? That's really all we're looking at.
Okay, so you don't have a firewall in between your bedroom that you rent and your place?
No.
Okay. All right, that, kind of. Thank you.
Who is going to go after the non-compliance for the thousand dollars? Is that going to be community development?
So there, there's multiple things, uh, with that. There, of, of course, you know, community development could do that if we had, you know, code enforcement. But the way that our program that we have right now that does auditing, they have added an extra feature to it, that they could do our complacency to the point where they do all the letters, they do all the things, and then they send us and our attorney to draft a letter, at least a template letter that can be sent. And, um, the, even the borough, just so everyone knows, the borough even is working with the same contractor that we work with for our audit for short-term rentals. And they are, um, looking at having them do their complacency on the bed tax side and sales tax side for short-term lodging through the borough. So, um, that's something that I talked to Jeanette about the last couple of weeks. It just came forward to us for the ability for us to have them do all the complacency and possibly even made it a little even easier to where you could just go online and fill out your application and do those type of things. Um, as it, you know, and that's one of the things, um, Councilmember DeMoss and Casa Grande, we talked about. How do we make it as easy as possible for everybody who wants to do a short-term rental to become compliant, and how can we help them? And, and this is just that next step that we could possibly take. Um, I can tell you that when we started this process, we had a lot of inconsistencies of, these aren't being inspected, these aren't being compliant. And, you know, our, our goal was, twenty twenty was supposed to be our year that we could tie things in and make sure, you know, help you become more compliant walking through the process. You know, I, I see twenty twenty-one being that because of course of twenty twenty and what happened. But, um, the program that we have gives us the ability to either let us do the complacency. And, and our office, if we find out somebody is operating that they don't know, we don't just be like, bam, we're going to fine you. We send a letter and say, hey, by the way, we noticed that you're operating. Here's the things that we need from you. And, I mean, even in the last month, we've sent out, I think, thirteen of those letters, and I've received twelve responses almost immediately right back, and we're helping every single one of them. one of them. So this isn't, you know, it's, it's a steep fine, but if you look through your codification that is coming forward, they're changing the fine of a five, $300 to $1,000 in, in your recodification.
Yeah, I was fine with the $1,000. I guess my question was, is the attorney gonna, so we're gonna now civilly, are we gonna work with the attorney to send those, assess that?
We would, we would, the first, for the first, let's say, first non-compliant that after multiple, you know, I'd say three, four contacts, that they just keep not being compliant, we would work with the city attorney to help us do a template letter that we could send out and we could start that process. It's also something that, you know, in the world of liens, if you reach the $1,000 mark, you're, it's a lot easier for the city to put a tax lien on your property, you know, and that's, that's a way to say, hey, by the way, if you're not gonna be compliant, we're gonna, we're gonna go that process. And that's something that can be done, like I said, the first time, it's always good to have a template letter and work with the attorney, but after that, it's just like any other lien that you would do. You file it, record it, go on.
The other thing I have a question about that I didn't see was, so with the updates and the definitions, I didn't see the corresponding updates in the land uses allowed table. How is that gonna happen?
That is correct, because currently, you know, for the last four years, they've been working on definitions. Now that Planning and Zoning Commission is working on land use, they've started, you know, they've started sort of in the build, but they're working their way down. It was fully discussed that when the land use title or table changes that come towards you, all of these would already be incorporated, all of these definitions.
Our July 6th work session was supposed to be review of the land use tables and definitions. That, but we had to go back with the land use plan. Yeah. So it's, it's our next work session, hopefully.
Okay.
It is. Cause I think, cause is there gonna be this, this no man's land where we're striking some of the definitions in the land uses allowed table? Cause now those definitions won't be found anywhere else in the code, but they'll be in the land uses allowed table until that gets caught up? Like, why didn't that?
Well, um.
Cause we could've changed and just left where they are allowed.
Well, and you could, but one of the things that we've noticed is, is even just as far as land use table, you know, we've just in the last two months had multiple interactions with community that's like, well, that's not how my definition is, but you have it listed somewhere else. So our goal is to take, every definition you see is going to be incorporated in your land use. But in order to do that land use table, that's also the months of ground truthing, making sure that we have.
No, I guess my question is, so we're striking some definitions that will not be defined anywhere else in the code, but they'll still be on the land use table. Is there a problem with enforcing that or will that confuse people?
So. So the only definite, like we really, the striking, a lot of the striking you see is like apartment, it said see dwelling, we, we moved it back to apartment because, you know, some people know what an apartment is, some people, you know, we have 12 different definitions of what a dwelling was. But as far as changing or striking, we, it may look like it's struck, but it is back in alphabetical order, instead of bouncing back and forth and going under dwelling and seeing what dwelling is and going to apartment and seeing what apartment is.
It, it's gonna need to get codified. And, and I agree that it better get codified sooner than the plan to have. The, the plan that is, is being discussed in Planning and Zoning is that they're gonna have little sections of town meetings to talk about the land use that the community in that area wanna see in their neighborhood. That, so if that, if that's gonna be that big of a lag, there will be problems. So if, if we could go through that and it make at least them comply with each other and then do the ground truthing with the communities, I think that would be, well, that's not really what, that's not really what ground truthing is. Ground truthing is, somebody tells me what is on each piece of property in the, in the city, that's ground truthing, which still got there. This is, the hotspots are where most of the B and Bs are in this map right here. But we just, we're trying to get more community involved, but you wanna see that.
But as, as far as your table, there, we haven't removed anything that would be in the definitions that's not already in the table.
It's just adding.
It's just adding a, a clear, you know, if you're gonna go and see if an apartment's available, if you're able to do it, instead of going to dwelling and then lodging and then apartment, you're gonna go to apartment and see what the definition of an apartment is. And you're gonna go to the land use table and look at apartments and have it all in alphabetical order. I'm all about the alphabetical order, sorry.
So like whole house nightly is, even in the code now, it says allowed in R3 U R O R A C and C B. Isn't that cleaner? Don't we have it where like it should just say whole house nightly and it be in the table and that tells you where it's allowed?
Well, if you remember, finding that land use allowed table was horrendous for many years.
On, on Unicode.
On Unicode. And then we finally gave it a number. So it's 15, 226 or something now?
Right.
But before, you can, you can pull it up. Even when I worked in the project office, it was terrible to drive by. So I think that's just a way of helping them get to it in more than one night.
Okay, yeah, cause now that's in addition. I just.
Not a blotter, there. I had lose of water, is that water up there?
Yeah, cause it seems more like. Yeah. Okay. I mean, it just seems more like the standard. Yeah. I mean, now we're starting to not even. A land use allowed table just tells you where you look at it. So if you have it more than two places in the code, you have to remember to update on with all times.
Um, and may I ask, since you said that, this question probably of Jackie and the Planning Commission, I noticed that there's the whole section 15, 10, 140 with all the definitions, but then definitions were brought into 15, 10, 226, and they're in some cases identical to 1, 10, 140. That is a very difficult thing to manage. Usually, they would then refer back to the definition section when somebody's looking it up versus if there's a change made in 10, 140, then there has to, you know, be very conscious of the other sections of code. So normally, there's just references back and forth. So I just, there must have been a reason why it was put in and I was just wondering why.
You're asking why there's definitions in front of the last land use allowed table?
Yeah.
Probably have to go back to Linda Murphy, when she was the coordinator. Had asked that.
Day or two.
Which was 20 years ago.
30.
Yeah. That's better. Yeah, that's closer.
Haven't heard that before.
Cause I'm not sure what ordinance did that, put definitions in two different places instead of letting us.
I think, I think, but you're talking about adding more.
Yeah.
Adding more. Under 226 rather than putting, keeping them all in 140. Because.
Instead of.
I have a code. See, that's why it's hard to, to look at this without everything.
Yeah. What ordinance changed the land use allowed, put definitions at the beginning of it?
Well, under 15, 10, 226, when it says land use is allowed, then it breaks it down on the things, and, and under A shows our land use allowed table, and then B gives you the land use of lodging, which is where it got placed when you, when planning and zoning started to be in means.
But that's also in 110, so I guess that's.
And, and it's the same thing with mobile vendor. I mean, mobile vendor is also in 15, 10, 140, but it's also under 10, 15, 10, 226.
So I wonder if some of this codification stuff is gonna clean that up?
No. Not unless we ask them to.
You have to do strike throughs and underlines or they're not gonna change it.
Yeah.
And numbering.
And numbering.
We'll fix that when it comes back to you guys.
Well, I think, I think having it all outlined will be much, you know, like easier to read.
Like it'll look in the code.
So. I'm just trying to look through this like I have never seen the code before and I'm trying to develop or build something or go into something and, and seeing if it's user-friendly or not user-friendly.
And so just so everyone knows, in 1989 was the first change to the definitions and then in the 15, 10, 226 is the same, it's 89, 91, and then again in 19.
That was Linda.
Well, and just cause we've always done something, doesn't mean we have to keep doing it. If it's wrong, it's wrong, let's fix it for the better.
Yep.
So Madam Mayor, or, and, and Funny Commission, cause coming back to you as well, I have been working on it, with Jackie, a working copy with all the numbering and lettering, so that'll come before you. And then I'll work with Jackie on this part two with the numbering and lettering to have that come back to you in that format so you can look again, because there are substantial changes and then I'll come back to the council. Does that sound procedurally good?
Yeah, I.
Okay.
I, if any changes are made to what, straight to the council for introduction, it has to come back first.
And then the other thing that we've talked about is under that 15, 10, 226, taking out and adding another section that would show the, just the lodging, just the lodging, instead of having it all merged under that title, or that table title.
Madam Mayor, so then that'll be the procedural in how we'll change it, but then as far as Councilmember DeMoss then asked about insurance and then, you know, there's been questions regarding fees and that sort of thing, so I was thinking that, I mean, we'd like to hear your feedback on that. So if you're gonna talk about that, we'd like to hear.
I, I guess I'm fine either way with insurance. I just wanna really know that we're doing something that really makes sense and doesn't cause additional liability for us if something, like say we miss something. And I'm fine with fines too. I mean, I think we have a lot more bed breakfast, obviously, and we need to get our handle around it and it takes a long time and you guys have done a ton of work towards it, but we just wanna get something in that's good right off, you know, totally ready to go right off the bat. Other opinions?
I'll just say, I think that the insurance makes sense after kind of, you know, refocusing and realizing that it really is about homes. I mean, that makes sense because people like, I'm already doing business, I already have my building insured, but, so I can get behind that. I mean, if there's a reason for each business, you know, I'm not sure why the mobile vendor needs to show, oh, I guess because they are operating on.
City property.
So that would make sense. So that makes sense to me. And I'm fine with the fines too, for sure, the thousand dollar.
Yeah, and that kind of corresponds to taxes too. I mean, we only ask people, businesses or people for insurance when it has to do with city property, like our harbor or our streets. So are we starting something? I don't know, that's a question.
I, I would say if you act this, yes, you are starting something. Is it legal to do so? I would say yes, if you can as a municipality do that, do you want to would be at the end of the day. And of course, we will talk to Brooks about it.
Anything else? Lots of work, thank you guys. I know you were like, we got rid of it. We passed the happy thing out.
And now we put it back.
That was my plan. But I, I've got, I've got Anchorage's application for bed and breakfast and I don't see where they're asking for insurance.
They, they do ask for insurance. They also incorporated a lot of the verbiage from Airbnb and VRBO. VRBO ensures each one of its renters a million dollars. That's part of what you pay when you do VRBO. And so Anchorage has defined, hey, we're not gonna really stick it to you, but you really need to look at giving us a copy of your insurance and knowing why it's important to have insurance. Fairbanks is in the process of working on that. Homer does not require business licenses, building permits, short-term rental, they require none of that. Valdez is currently, right now, working on their short-term rental code. They, you know, they've had a huge influx of B and Bs in nightly rentals. They're, they're working on it as well as, like I said, you know, the, the Borough, this is a new beast for the Borough and, and they, they're sort of hitting the ground running just like we did in 2017. And they're learning so much more on why it's important to, you know, follow up with the people. And in the Borough, the, the program that we're using, both of us, I mean, the Borough used to wait for a complaint or find out and then they would do hours and hours of research and now it's sort of right at your fingertips.
So how long is a business license good for? Like for a B and B?
Business licenses are a year, correct? They expire every calendar year.
So, you know, we're, we're talking about investigating insurance or not, I mean, couldn't that not just be part of the process of getting a business license? And then we don't, you know, we're not gonna come over and check six months later, but when you're getting your license, you have to have these things in order. So it's not adding anything, I think it's all a process of the business license application is what I'm thinking.
Well, it would be the, the lodging permit.
Correct.
Right, well, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, whichever, whichever it is, I'm just saying, it, it, it can be too part of that whole process.
Correct. And then Jeanette had spoke about getting your guys' feedback on the fees in general for the permits. I just want ever, the council, I mean, I know the commission knows, but the council to know that our goal there was to just get rid of, you know, having a permit for this and a fee for this and a fee for this. It's one involved fee that includes your life safety as well as all the administrative back behind the scenes stuff that happens. And Ms. Eklund does have, just so everyone knows, Anchorage charges $290 by annually for their B and B, so twice a year.
And then for their site plan review.
And then they do a site plan review requirement for B and Bs and the site plan review is another $190. And then Fairbanks does it a little differently. They do their business license, the first one's $40, and then every year after, you have to give a copy of your gross receipts and then they base the permit, the business license as well as the short-term lodging off of the gross receipts, so.
When you, so, okay, so when we do inspections, like the life safety inspections, when we do other, like the schools or government buildings or medical facilities, are we charging those people? No.
They do not. The hotel, motels and lodging is where the life safety inspection came into play in 2017 and 18. And it was initiated off of, you know, the previous city attorney did find it in the code where there was a life safety charge. where there was a life safety charge per hour. We incorporated into the application and from two thousand nine, well, late two thousand eighteen to current, we charged short-term rentals. And then in twenty nineteen, the fire chief said, hey, we also have to do these life safety inspections for hotel motels. And we're requiring them to, they fall under the lodging. So we started in two thousand nineteen, did a training year and then again before twenty twenty happened. But as of like right now, I'll just go back, in twenty nineteen, a hundred and thirty-eight applications were brought forward. All of that, all but three paid their life safety inspections.
So if I was a single-family home and I was gonna do a nightly rental, you know, just a nightly rental, when I go to the land uses allowed table, I'd look up single-family home or I would look up what? I'd look up when you guys put it, when it gets put in there, that, that definition.
The definition would be if you're doing a nightly rental, it would fall under the short-term lodging portion of the code fifteen ten one, or fifteen ten two two six.
Okay.
Where the lodging is laid out.
Okay, but, but there's no lodging, okay, bed and breakfast room. So that's where you would do HP, HPT. So what if people are doing, because the other thing we don't, which that's fine, but one thing we need in this town is long-term rentals. So if people have a single-family home, none of this restricts them from doing monthly rentals.
Absolutely.
Because we really need that to keep going in this town.
And, and that, that was with the clerk. If you're doing a monthly rental, they are required a business license.
Yeah.
And they pay a fee of, I think, is it quarterly, Brenda, to the Borough?
Yeah, sales tax. You have to get a state business license and sales tax exemption and a city business license.
Are those inspected?
No.
No. They're more than thirty days.
Which I don't know that we want to start inspecting monthly rentals.
No.
It's just like someone living in a home. Because you, your tenant might not.
So I, I have a question that has come up from people in the community. When we started with the vendor, we entered into that contract to find out how compliant our lodging businesses were. And we found out it was really bad. Fifty percent of the people were licensed and paying their sales tax. And I think we were missing out on over half a million dollars or something in sales tax. And we got to the point where we were getting pretty good reports from that company. But then the current city manager didn't wanna start any kind of fine. He just wanted to do a grace year because let's, let's let people get used to this, that they have to be compliant. But we've never done a cost, right?
No.
So.
No, no fines.
How does the council feel about, are we ready? Or are we still wanting to big step into this?
A few years ago, we've had that company and we've never seen a report as to how many people weren't in compliance. And they were gonna get notices, I thought.
They did.
Okay, and so did they get in compliance?
So when we started it in two thousand, late two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen is when we started with the company. The, the first year was two thousand nineteen, basically. We contacted everybody during two thousand eighteen and said, hey, we understand your operating. We sent out all the letters. We had really good complacency in two thousand nineteen. There was very, very few people that were not compliant and by the end of the year, they were. And then twenty twenty happened. And twenty twenty happened and it was like, we didn't get applications. We didn't follow up. We didn't, you know, nobody was monitoring short-term rentals because it was twenty twenty. And so in my mind, like twenty nineteen, even twenty twenty, is that, is that learning year? I, I, in my heart of hearts, believe that we have really worked with everybody and it, and the new people even that come in and were like, hey, by the way, we know you're operating. Like I said, the thirteen, twelve of them were within hours of us sending out just an email to them.
So it doesn't sound like there's people that are operating without licenses. Is that what you're saying?
Currently, right now, as of today, working with Hamari and comply, putting our business license and our bed tax information together with them, I show at least thirty-five to forty-five people. But I believe that it is literally, they have so many ads and it's for like a room and it's merging the data. So that's one of the things that I'm working on with Hamari right now. It's also something that, you know, Hamari's been working on over the last two years with not only us, but with the, the Borough. And so it's just this small little conflict. I can tell you from my, my side of things, once we are able to say, okay, here's your business license, here's your lodging permit, it, for the longest time, a lot of people believe they got their business license, then they were able to go. And, and so that was a big part of our catch-up, a big part. But I would say that starting in twenty twenty-two, I would, I would guess by, by midsummer, you would be almost a hundred percent compliant.
But what currently, I think what the question is, is what percentage of operating B and Bs are in compliance?
Right now, we have, we have a hundred and thirty-two short-term rental applications. And Hamari shows that we have at least forty more that are not, that don't have applications. And like I said, twelve, thirteen of those in the last two weeks, we've caught. And so it's literally diving into the equipment, diving into the data and seeing if there is a conflict between the data and how somebody's listing their property.
Because they can't, they also don't have business licenses. Because to get a business license, you have to sign off on it before the clerk.
Correct.
So, I mean, there's enough people following the process that the ones not should absolutely be fined.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, I, I've gotten recently several calls complaining, asking when the city's gonna go after these people that don't report. So, yeah, I think that it's time.
You know, and another part of it is that even the bed tax. I mean, I think over the years, you know, right now, I can tell you that even, even in the financial department, you know, there's been some turnover. And so it's this, this learning curve of, okay, I'm getting bed tax. Why are you sending me this? What are, and I'm like, well, it's because they're operating and you need to be, you know, they need to be filing with you and you need to know if they're not filing or quarterly, then you've got to send them a letter. So within that area, it also gives us the ability with Hamari to, you know, for the, the stickler that's just absolutely telling us that they're not operating, we have the ability to say, okay, here's your case-ready documents. So fines can be adhered, both in the bed tax world and in the short-term lodging world if we, if the council chooses to move forward with it.
Well, because the Borough will pursue them for the bed tax.
Yeah. So, so then, say I decide in my tiny little house to rent out a room. So I'm renting out a room, and I'm renting out a room. How do you find me? Find me? I mean, if I just say nothing except that, you know, word of mouth, hey, you know, a hundred dollars a night for a room.
We'll, we'll find you.
Well, this is what I'm hearing. They aren't being found, so I don't know.
That's what I hear. They aren't being found.
This is what I hear. I don't know. I mean, and I'm not renting out a room.
Which, which companies does our vendor?
They do forty-eight different companies.
So if they're advertising anywhere in those forty-eight, they'll be found.
So they find them through the advertisements.
And also.
That's how they primarily find them.
Also through, I mean, when you type Facebook. If somebody goes onto your Facebook page and says, it was wonderful. I only paid a hundred dollars a night, twenty-four seven, they're operating and.
So who finds them though?
Finds.
Not finds, but companies.
The company that they hire.
The company. Yeah, twenty-four seven, they're monitoring all of those businesses.
And you'll catch the, you'll catch the honest people when they apply for a business.
Right, but that's good for people to hear.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, I, I like to, to say that when we started this process, it, it again is never going against, you know, trying to find bad people. It's us saying, okay, look, we do have the people that are contacting you as council members saying, I know that they're operating. And in the past, it used to be, okay, well, then we're gonna call you, we're gonna check. But now we have that keystroke that we can contact and say, hey, here's an address even, and they can search by that.
Okay, I have to pick one thing though. The bed tax does not go to the Borough. It goes to the city. We have a city warrant. But you said it went to the Borough.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The sales tax to the.
The sales tax does.
City, city goes after bed tax.
City goes after bed tax. And one of the other nice things about Hamari, let's say that we have the, the couple individuals that are just adamant that they don't run it with the case-ready documents, then in your code, as it stands right now, under finance, under title five or chapter five, it specifically states that they have the ability to request and audit your books. And we can compare the numbers that Hamari has and make sure that, you know, it gives you that.
Because they could report on one bedroom.
Right.
And then be collecting for two or five or.
Right, and so it gives that, you know, that leeway where we can go, no, no, no. We, this is what we know you've been doing and let's just get you compliant and let's get you caught up, but.
But no place on there. It shows that how many bedrooms they're running out or whatever. It just shows, this is my total income. And then this is my bed tax.
But it shows the, the breakdown of how many rooms are available.
Maybe through something else, but not through your sales tax report.
No, no, nope. It just, it break, and that's, that's why when we get an application for short-term lodging, we send the application to the bed tax department, to the fire department. They, they incorporate it into their accounting portion and the fire department sets up their inspections. And then when it's all complete and compliant, we sign off on it, we send it to the clerk. And like I said previously, the, they used to get a business license and assume they were compliant. And now, you know, over the last, I think it's two, three years, we've really stuck with, we have a copy of your business license, we have a copy of your building, your lodging permit. And, and you'll see in the code where we incorporated that, you know, people need to see that you have those two things.
Well, if they got a business license, then they should have had, because the clerk won't issue the business license without the lodging permit.
But that, that wasn't what was happening in the past.
So I have a business in my home that I'm doing my accounting. But, so I go in and get a business license and now I'm also gonna run out two rooms and pocket the money. Then she wouldn't know that I was renting to two people, to other places.
Well, it, so once you get a state license though.
Why do you have to have state license if I already have a business in my home?
Because it's two different lines of business.
But you, how do they know?
If you advertise, that's.
Oh, the advertising, that's the only thing, okay. It's all advertising, all right.
And, and you know, and that's, like I said, in another portion of the code and lodging portion, you know, we're, we're going more towards where we're asking, when you run your ad, you're gonna put your business license number, just like any other, any other corporation or lodging in the lower forty-eight or anywhere. You pull up an ad and you see it even on TripAdvisor, all of a sudden, there's these permit numbers. That gives just one more telltale that, let's say, twenty twenty-two, we give them the building, we give them the business license numbers and then they're starting to scan and they're like, wait a minute, this is inactive, this is not active, this is in compliant, in not compliant, all because they just didn't list that part. And we can go on tech and then be like, hey, we really need that to be added to it.
So one last thing, council members, if you haven't brought in your code book for the clerk to update with the most recent supplements, do that.
I think that went out as an email?
Yeah, from Karen. Oh, I don't, just a few days ago.
I didn't see it.
Of course, I can't get on my computer half the time.
Well, I check mine all the time, so.
So maybe it's filtered?
I'll make sure that.
Make sure, wow, so you want them.
I don't think it's that big, is it? I didn't think it'd be that big.
Uh, does planning and zoning have anything for the good of the order or wrap-up for admin? And we'll call it quits?
Oh, well, I will just announce that I applied for the rural senate. So we'll see what happens come October. If I don't get it, you'll still see me in.
I can't be in both.
Mike, you're looking for a new chair.
You can't be in both.
No.
You can't be both places.
Oh, no. I think some cities allow it, but I, I, I don't think that's gonna work here. I'm in both places now for the Borough Planning Commission and this one. But, but this will be an elective position, not an appointed position. And the assembly won't be all white men anymore, maybe. A little diversity.
Go ahead. First, I want to thank the Planning Commission for all your work and then council for this work session. I think for our side, I feel like it answers questions. And like I said, I worked with Jackie on some reformatting. And so when ordinances come to you, they'll come complete with all the language just to hopefully help the process along. But thank you for your input and comments and if you have more, please let us know.
Thank you, guys, and out at sixty-four.